Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mayor and City Council Workshop, Wednesday, August 6, 2025. If you'd please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
For our roll call, please show council members meeting. Councilmember Tillman absent today. Councilmember Meade contacted me saying he would be absent. There's a chance Councilmember Tillman shows up, as I did not receive him the same. Going forward, review of the minutes of the July 9, 2025, and July 14, regular meetings. Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns regarding those? Hearing none, proceeding forward. Councilmember's statement regarding conflicts of interest on agenda items. Do any councilmembers have conflicts they'd like to state today? Hearing none, proceeding forward. Resolution, ordinances and agreements. Introduction, ordinance 18-2025, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Questions, comments, concerns regarding that? I'll give a brief overview of what's happening there. The board's moving from five members to six members. Six members is going to be the standard for all boards going forward as we adjust. So we'll move from five to six on most of the boards. Again, we're starting with Parks and Rec as kind of an example there. The other thing is adjusting when their chair and secretary is appointed on that board to match with the appointments of people to boards for the... Since now we've made it to where boards are appointed on August 1st, the terms for the chairperson and secretary will begin at that next meeting when they appoint them. Looking for questions, comments, concerns from council regarding the ordinance. And this has... This had previously been discussed with the Parks and Rec Board back in June, I think. So they're aware of this change as well?
Yeah, this is just realigning the... When they do their elections for chair and for secretary, for when they're appointed.
Additional comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, proceeding forward. Ordinance 19-2025, fiscal year 2025, budget amendment number three. Jim, do you want to cover that real quick? What's going on?
Roll down far enough. Alrighty, so on the utility fund, we've realized more interest than was projected. And of course, we also received the first installment of our PFAS class action settlement. So we had that income revenue increase of $216,000. That means we'll take $216,000 less from fund balance than expected. On the general fund, we did end up receiving more income tax revenue. Our projection was lower than we realized. So increased their own revenue. And also, we are using, let's see, $236,000 out of fund balance. And that is offsetting basically street repairs that we used, that fund balance, that highway use revenue out of the fund balance for. So again, they both net to zero, so they both balance. Also, we carried over some police car upfitting from last fiscal year to this fiscal year. So nothing huge there. Moving forward to the '26 budget amendment on the general fund. Again, revised the tax revenue projection, increased that by $85,000, reduced the amount of fund balance that we were going to use. And we had some increased expenditures within the police department. Some of those relate to having that officer assigned to the Drug Task Force. There were some upfront costs associated with that. So that's most of the offset of the $72,990 is the police increase for those expenses. And again, most of them are related to becoming part of the Drug Task Force. There's also a small increase in travel and training for the police administrative position. So no giant numbers. So any questions on those?
Questions, comments, concerns regarding budget amendment number one... Or number three for 2025 and budget amendment number one for 2026?
Just to make sure I'm understanding you right. So 2025 budget amendment number three. So state income tax revenues was higher than we thought it was going to be. So that's the 250 increase. We are not using as much of the fund balance in general fund, or we are?
This is that we're going to be using that fund balance, right, Jim? Or have used it, I guess I should say.
Are decreasing the use of fund balance.
In '25?
In '25.
'25. So we got more bank interest, and then we got that PFAS settlement. So we didn't need to pull as much from fund balance. So that...
I thought that's utility fund. I'm speaking to general fund at the moment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
But that does answer my question for utility fund. I was just going to make sure I understood that, but...
So, right, so on the general fund, the 250, right? So that's right. We underestimated the tax revenue, so that revenue is increasing by $250,000.
And it's increasing fund balance as well?
And...
What does that mean?
Yes, and we're also increasing use of fund balance because we didn't... We didn't put a number in. We didn't budget for the street repairs because we didn't have a cost associated with it
Jim, are we tracking separately the PFAS settlement revenue and holding that for specifically for PFAS?
Well, it goes into the general fund. You know, we really can use it for whatever we need.
It's not segregated cash, like its own pot of money, basically, is what you're saying?
It's not...
I mean, the PFAS changes we're going to have to make are going to be more than we're getting out of those checks to begin with, so...
I still would like to see a segregation of that. I mean, you know, money is fungible, but at least the... Clear tracking of the accounting.
I mean, we certainly will keep track of what that revenue stream is, you know, for the PFAS settlement, but... And, you know, if we choose to...
Is there a reason why we wouldn't want to segregate it?
I just don't know what the point would be because you're going to end up spending more than you expect to begin with.
It's...
That's fine. If it'd be too much of a pain, like that's a reason.
If we're tracking how much we're getting, I mean, that's about the extent that you need to go. You don't have to segregate it because, again, you're going to end up spending more than that. As long as we have a track of how much we've received in that settlement, how much of that is offset by the actual settlement from the PFAS suits.
I mean, you could restrict it, but I don't think it's necessary. You know, I certainly can get the treasurer's recommendation one day, but...
Yeah, let's do that, just to see what she's recommended on that.
Sometimes it's a good idea to segregate cash. Sometimes it doesn't matter, but, you know.
Again, I lean towards it.
I think, you know, I think kind of going along with what the mayor's saying, you know, we're going to spend this money on the remediation projects, one way or another. You know, we're constantly moving money back and forth between utility and general.
Right, left pocket, right pocket stuff.
Salaries that are apportioned across the two different budgets. You know, revenue that comes in through the general fund for water sewer that gets moved over to the utility. Always money going back and forth between the two. So this...
As long as we're tracking the overall number.
Restricting it doesn't... I don't know that it gets us a whole lot, other than it maybe would make it clear for quick reference, you know, what we've received to date or something like that.
But I think as long as we're tracking that to the side, again, you don't have to restrict it.
You can keep that number in a spreadsheet easily.
Yeah, it's not a huge... Separate line item or some kind of way of keeping you dragged.
I'll speak with the treasurer and see if she has suggestions, one way or the other.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns regarding budget amendment number three, number one for 2025 and 2026?
'26, another increase in state income tax. I assume that's just...
That's us projecting that we're going to have more.
Yeah, it was probably held flat or something like that, the income tax revenues. But because we're seeing increasing revenues over time, we're saying, okay, we're going to increase it by some margin.
Yeah, we projected a little bit higher, but again, after seeing the numbers that came in for 2025, this is basically just...
Raising it up.
Yep, rising it up.
Yep, that makes sense. And you... All the police stuff, that's... You said drug task force stuff and training stuff.
And the upfitting was also... There's $30,000 towards upfitting our new police cars.
Twenty-five to '26.
That's just making our cars better, basically?
It's adding all the equipment that's necessary beyond what comes from the factory. Even when we buy, you know, a police spec vehicle, we still add additional lights and the radios and things like that aren't part of it out of the factory.
Yep, makes sense. Good, thank you.
Comments, questions, concerns from council? Hearing none, proceeding forward. City manager report, Jim, what you got for us?
Let's see.
Oh, actually, one second, Jim. Actually forgot that I skipped over something. Public comment pertaining to agenda and non-agenda items. If you want to comment on specific agenda items, please make sure you sign up with a clerk. However, now is the time to come forward for public comment pertaining to agenda and
I'm going to... It's okay if I hand these while I'm talking for you guys to look at. Is that okay? I have some pictures. Are already aware this is concerning problems, consistent problems I've had with a junkyard neighbor, and it's not small. It is to the point of actual contamination. There's two oil tanks that are sitting out in his yard. There are big bags that even have mold covered on them. Water gathers on things. And bless Darryl, he was trying to help me even with the other council in because there were a lot of things in his yard that did not have tags on them. So he went from that angle to try to get cars cleared out, and cars have tags on them. There's also two very huge vehicles that are... One is tagged, one is not. They're like storage units. Now, a long time ago, this neighbor had asked for special permission to build a garage. And I had neighbors even say, why don't you oppose that? I'm like, well, it's his property, and if he will clear out some of that and put it in his garage, that'd be great. That's not what happened. More went in the garage, more went in the yard, which is right beside mine. And that's... I have many more pictures that I've exchanged with, like Darryl. And I've been waiting for the council to turn over because I did bring it before the last council, but no one really wanted to move forward against junkyard ordinance. I'm not complaining about high grass. I'm not bothering people about high grass. This is serious stuff because mosquitoes, rats, mice, they spread diseases. And it also decreases property value. I am fixing up my home once again and working on it and may need to sell it. And it's an old historic home. It's going to affect property value, which I mentioned to him nicely. He did not take that very well. There was even a meeting, I don't know if it was a year or two back, my memory is a little fuzzy at the moment, but, you know, Councilman Miller was there. I think it was about the bypass, but we did end up talking about the junkyard neighbors and talking to them. In the past, I had tried, didn't work out real well. Well, this time it worked out really bad. So I won't be doing that again anytime soon. But we do have, and I reviewed, the junkyard ordinance that we currently had with Darryl because he was not real sure if it... And we went by it, line by line. And it definitely meets every single thing. And it's hazardous. It's not just junk. It's hazardous. At this point, I do need to get my fixed fence, one of my fence fixed. One of the oil tanks is right, like, by my property. And for a while, everything was pushed up against my fence. Well, he did move things back like an inch from the fence. One of the pictures shows because my husband and I went... He was alive. We paid for the whole fencing, including what one of crossed... Like, if you would walk down the sidewalk and see, we paid for all of that and put it in. It's now starting to tip over. In the one picture, you can see, like, they have a little post leaning up against it. It would be falling down. So when we go to replace it, then again, there's that matter. But it's not... Walk down that part of Pump House, if you just... And it's a public alleyway. This part is mostly from my side. I do have some pictures I sent Darryl from the other side. And from my wraparound portrait, you can see the other tank. There's more than one oil tank sitting in that yard. There's also barrels I don't know how with it. The garbage bags that are in that photo have mold on them, and water settles. It's a really bad issue. And in the past, it's been said, well, we can't find them. There's no way to find them. There is a way to find them. Also ordinance, I was on an ordinance council a long time ago. I don't know if Councilman McCarron remembers, and even before with Mayor Flickinger, I was on redoing some of the ordinances. And so I'm very familiar with the process. Some of that can even be changed on how you find it. I don't know how... I have not had a chance or the energy to look at how other counties are doing it. But this isn't like a small... It's not like a small junkyard problem. It's huge. And like I said, property value is important, and it was encouraged to even talk to your neighbor. I've done that. Wasn't a good idea. I did it nicely. I did it respectfully as I could. I did it with the intent of helping out. And many people know I have helped even sometimes when I didn't feel able, just as people have helped me. Because that's the type of community Tonny Town has been since I've moved here. They're hoarders. They're hoarders. They don't want to get rid of their stuff. They don't think there's any reason to get rid of their stuff. I even had a friend of mine whose mother was a hoarder who I helped him. It's a different mindset. And I know landlords deal with this a lot, but these aren't tenants. The father and the son owned it. The father has died. Dan Glass, well, it's Edward Daniel Glass owns it. His brother is living with him there. You know, when we first moved there, it was actually tenants that lived there, and we didn't need a fence. It was a beautiful yard, beautiful flowers, and no mice issues, nothing. Slowly, though, over the years, since it's built up, normally, we would just get mice, like, in the fall when it got cold from the field. It's all year long. We now have cats. That helps a little bit. But I hope the pictures show you some of the extent. But, I mean, the new communities come in, our taxes are going up in town. And if you want to attract good people to buy homes in town and not just in the developments, then you also have to protect us against severe junkyard issues if you want to attract the right type of people to town. And if you want your property values in town to stay up because all of our property values affect each other, let's be honest. If I have anything else on the notes, like I said, the last council wasn't very amendable to this. I'm hoping this council is and that there's something that can be done because I really... I'm a Tonny Town person. I don't want... I'm not about making Tonny Town look bad. I'm not about that. I'd rather deal with it locally. And I really... My energy is limited. I'd rather not have to put the energy into going steps further. I really would prefer not to. So I'm presenting this to you to see if you can come up with how to get this taken care of. Because it's not... If it was a small problem, I would not be here like this, and I would not have continued with it. And Darryl was very sympathetic, and he was a good guy, and I miss him. And when I found out I was not here when that happened, and I just kind of... Because I know you haven't filled that position yet, and everything is very busy, but at the same time, this matter now can no longer... I can't put it on hold any longer. I think I've reached most of the points.
So we're going through this problem with a couple of different properties right now. Just this week, I've worked with the city manager to start abatement on a couple of properties here in town that have seen continuous issues. The property from the pictures that you showed, for instance, one of the biggest issues is we're not going to bait personal property. We're not going to take people's property and throw it away. That takes more than just having lawnmower, people go out and mow the lawn and whatnot. The other thing is, we can find, and we do find. The problem isn't the find part. The problem is the collection part. So there's some counties in Maryland around the states that have municipal day in courts, for instance, where they allow the municipalities to present their cases to get them seen before a judge and whatnot. But here in Carroll County, you go through the entire process. There is no municipal day. So to actually collect those fines, we have to levy them against the properties. We have to go to court. That does take attorney fees. And while we may recoup those eventually, more than likely, we're not going to recoup what we have spent to do that.
On the other hand, if I have to go further up, and I don't really want to go into detail about what that further up would mean, it could also impact the town. Because this doesn't just affect me. And there have been so many conversations about this. And it's, you know, I really think if they thought things were going to transform into something, they would do something about it. But those initial steps haven't, like, to my knowledge, I mean, Darryl was trying to get approval to send out letters to say, hey, we can put a lien on your house and everything else, but hadn't got those types of approvals. So nothing's even been tried or started. And to me, it is the towns, especially since past conversations, even about talking about your neighbors and even about house values. This is the town's responsibility. I really don't have the energy, but I will, at this point, I'm in it. At this point, I'm in it because it literally could have cost my family something very dear. So those pictures aren't minor. And if you walk down Pump House, I don't have picture from the other road, but you can see it yourself. And it's bad. And it's not like he doesn't have storage places for it. He does. And I did not try to stand up against him. I figured it was his property. If he wanted to put that garage, yeah, it was a little too big. I needed him to finish the front of it. No, I can't do anything about that. But the junkyard itself, and if you look at also the health issues, let's talk about health issues in the health department. Let's talk about the mosquitoes, the mice, and the rats. And let's talk about diseases that come from those because there are some entering the U.S. from mosquitoes. And no, I'm not going all crazy on that, but yes, it's there. I know they're not deadly, but they do put you down for a few weeks. They do make you sick. They can land you in the hospital. Water forms all over that junkyard. So we're not... We're looking at a junkyard, but we're also looking at a health hazard. So there's many different ways to take this. And I do believe that the town has some responsibility to look into this. And I don't want to put the energy into going further than the town. But like I said, at this point, I don't...
Again, we can have the city manager issue the letters as far as the fines to clean up the property goes.
But that's all you're willing to do.
We can abate stuff as far as, like, grass and stuff like that goes, but as far as going onto the property and throwing away property that is...
Now, I'm not looking for that, but letters saying he needs to clean up his mess or...
And I know...
And lifting specifics, like, I shouldn't have... There should be no oil tanks in the yard. There should not be... There should not be things that are rotting on... That can be caught on fire on his porch and... And when I went to talk to him, I stayed on the pathway up to his house and up to his door. I did not go off that pathway. Wouldn't go off the pathway. And it's funny where he's placed, you know, no trespassing signs because I wouldn't have gone through those ways. I would never, anyway. But it's right beside my yard. It also, again, property value. If you really want to attract the right people to Tonny Town, that is a good question I think you guys need to discuss, too, and your own property values because we all affect each other. So I'm not expecting you to go in and take that stuff out. I know that you can't do that. But there is cause and effects, and I do believe the law is behind you. There are certain things, even other than send letters, especially if he knows he's going to be fined and that other things could take place. I think it might motivate him, but that's at least a start. That's at least something. The council so far hasn't given me anything, and I didn't really have any hope of that with the council. And how you're responding with me now, I'm kind of starting to lose hope also because I'm not looking for you to go in and take physical stuff out of his yard. I'm looking for you to put in place policies that will help that mess so that we don't get sick and so we don't have issues, and also so you all don't have issues. It just isn't just for me. It's for my other neighbors, and I know several of you own historic properties in town, too, and also people who will move in.
The issue is, is that, for instance, I know we've sent letters out to this property before, and I know I spoke with Darryl about this property before. My understanding when I spoke with Darryl was that the oil containers, for instance, those don't meet a code requirement to take out. We can send them...
They do meet... If you look... Have you read the junkyard? Have you fully gone down and looked at the junkyard?
I'm just letting you know what code enforcement told me back when we were looking at this property. Again, we can send letters as far as the fines goes. The problem, and I'm going to give you an example of something we've seen in town before, which was we levy fines against a property that basically had a junkyard mess out of it. The fines accumulated to $180,000. Eventually, when we got to the point where we were going to take that individual to court, they eventually cleaned it all up. But the common knowledge is that a court in Carroll County isn't going to levy those fines against that individual, even if we take it to court on it.
Not to levy it against the property itself, correct?
They're not going to do that either. We do live in a county where property rights are very strong. Even the courts here believe in that. Again, it is a path we can go, but the moment we get to court, we are going to be spending citizen in town money trying to do that, which could ultimately be futile if the courts come back and say, hey, you're not going to be able to collect those funds. So again, the extent of what we're able to do is go into abate the...
What about taking it from a health hazard issue? Have you tried that at all?
That would have to go to the county health department. It's actually the state health department.
But it's also something that can start because your voices are louder than mine. That's why I'm coming to you quite frankly.
Seems that would be the best approach, is to try from a health hazard standpoint. I mean, the state department... The health department in Carroll County is part of the state government. It's not part of the county government. So they have, you know, they skip a couple steps by doing that. They find that there's an issue with health. They might be able to have a little stronger approach to what they can do and what they can't do. I know during my time mayor and on the council, I've tried to have ordinances passed that would restrict clutter or restrict appearance, but nobody's ever had the appetite to do that. And I don't know that that's the right approach. I think the... I think if we take the path of least resistance and would contact health departments, say we have some health concerns on a couple of properties here in Tonny Town, what can you do to help us and see what that takes? This would be a wise approach. Maybe nothing, but it'd be something we haven't tried before.
That is a similar approach.
Quick question, to clarify. You said nobody had an appetite to do that. Are you talking about passing an ordinance or enforcing the ordinance?
Both.
Passing the ordinance.
Both.
Well, that was the reason they wouldn't pass the ordinance, nobody would enforce it. And that was basically the reason for not having more restrictive ordinances against... That's not the only place in town that...
I think we're dealing with multiple places. And actually, on some of the other places, we are going to the county as far as, like, health, housing permits, making sure that the houses are livable and stuff like that.
One thing that I have been... There's a property also on West Baltimore Street, right on the other side of the light that is peeling paint, that I'm sure that is lead-based. And from the point that peeling paint is coming into the environment unchecked, is a health hazard and should be addressed. And I think that's... That approach would help not only that property, but perhaps the property next to the place of...
His doesn't. His doesn't have its siding on his. But like, the mold, the mold, I mean, like, that's right near where my son plays.
Mold is a problem, too.
All those things that are built up, you can see in the one pictures, there's mold collecting on them. And like I said, mosquitoes, mice, rats, and do you want your children next to stuff like that, too?
The health department might say, we can't do anything. And that, you know, then we'd take another approach.
Well, and again, that's kind of where we're facing the West Baltimore property that you were talking about, is that's where we're looking right now, is for the county housing to get involved in that. And we're actually abating the vegetation growth there coming up. But again, the problem, and what's been expressed to me by the city managers, the appetite at the county, even getting the health department involved at the state of what are they actually going to do about a personal property? That is... Again, it doesn't hurt to do it, and we can do it.
Doesn't hurt to review the laws, both county and locally, and even amendments, too. And I've been part of committees that have made amendments, too, so that there could be, not specifically in this instance, but in other instances, different types of fines levied. That was a long time ago, granted. But, you know, again, I was hoping with a little bit more... Thank you for a little bit of positive, at least, looking into other things. Because to me, what I'm just hearing, oh, we're at a stalemate again, and we can't do anything about it. And that's a big issue.
And again, the problem isn't, the fines aren't the issue. We can, we can already levy fines, and we can already go to try to collect them. Um, the probably, the problem comes with the cost of trying to collect them and whether we actually recoup that money when we go to do it.
But is there, is there going to be a bigger cost if I have to go further and I have to get an attorney, and I have to do all this other stuff? What about, I mean, again, I'm a Tonny Town person. I don't want to make us look bad in any way, shape, or form. I really don't. I don't want to really go after any other thing. But I've also looked and talked to a couple of people about other things that I can do. And that's really not the way I want to go. I really, my energy is low. I would rather just concentrate on taking care of my family and getting my place fixed up and working and doing things. And ask yourself again about your current property and if you want your kids next to that. And that's what I'll end with because I do believe, hopefully, this new council has the power to work together to change some things. And it's taken me a while to come back. So, I would appreciate whatever it could do, and I'll look forward to see what that might possibly be.
Sounds good. Thank you.
One thing that I, I, I will say is, I know that we've been actively talking about efforts to, like, revitalize the community and dealing with, with blighted properties like this, I think is something that we're going to have to figure out, strategize and figure out how to, how to, uh, deal with in, in, in the medium, short, and long run. If we don't have any mechanisms to, to do that, I mean, that, that is a town problem. And we, we need to figure out something. Otherwise, you know, this, this kind of decline is inevitable. And she's right. It's going to bring down everybody's property values, even the new developments that are either here or coming in. Like, it, it, it creates a sinkhole effect, right? It's a, it's a giant black hole. It hurts everybody. I'm not saying that I don't have any answers for you, right? But like, I, I understand what you're talking about. I've had conversations with, with people, including people on this council, so like, about it. And, 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 you know, this is, this is something that we all kind of recognize because it's bad for the town, right? Like, if I'm driving up, up this road right here and I see blighted properties, I don't live here. I'm, I'm like, oh, Tonny Town's a, not a great place to be, right? So, like, you know, the, the facade of the town matters. And, and if we don't have a strategy, I think we do need to start trying to develop one. And, you know, we've got a comprehensive plan going on right now, Mr., Mr. Jim over there. Uh, you know, maybe that's something that we should, we should incorporate in, in that comprehensive plan. Or could, I don't know.
The problem, the problem doesn't come down that there isn't a strategy or there isn't mechanisms to do it. The problem comes down to is the willingness there to spend town money to try to do these things. And then once we do, and we do take them to court, there is the very real possibility that we lose continuously. That will bleed money.
There's a possibility that someone else might-
There's a fine line between property values and public health, and that's, that's what we have to address.
Yeah, that, well, that's what I'm talking about. Like, like, strategy doesn't necessarily mean, you know, just taking somebody to court. Like, there, there can be multiple avenues. I don't, again, I don't know what the answers are.
What I'm saying is when you-
Having a playbook for it might be a good idea to start trying to develop.
New ordinances or additions to ordinances, for instance, that are going to somehow, none of that's going to make these people who are already not complying comply. Again, we can, we can already levy fines. We can already go to collect them with an attorney. I mean, the next thing you could say is, you know, this gives us permission. Again, we, we already have the ability to abate, but it does put us in a legal risk going onto property and throwing stuff away, as well as a property rights risk.
Well, again, I'm not saying that that is, is the, the strategy. Like, that can be like item one A or whatever. Like, like, I mean, I'm, I'm saying, like, develop a list of, of different, different plays that you can, you can call depending on the situation.
There's other plays, um, for housing permits. Again, there's, you can go to the, um, you can go to the health department. But at the end of the day, if your, the council has to be realistic of what you can do in regards to property rights and how far the town can get involved before you become liable in a property rights issue between neighbors. Because again, it isn't, it is not the town's job to be the mitigator between neighbors. Again, we have, we have, we have their, we have their responsibility, we have their responsibility for public safety, and we're the responsibility for public health, but that only goes so far. And you have to remember, when we do pursue these things, it takes staff time, it takes staff money. Because again, this isn't the only property we're dealing with. We have properties throughout town that we're dealing with. And indivi- individuals can already actually, again, they can make complaints to the health department regarding properties. I just am wary, wary about the town getting involved in housing disputes. And yes, we have the ordinances in place to do this, and yes, we can find them. Again, the city manager can send a letter, and we have been doing that. There's just a line that we have to draw of how far you want to go into that. If council wants to go further, they can. It will be a risk though. There's no doubt about it.
The problem is, when you say that we're, that we don't want to spend town money to pursue this, then you've made a, a value judgment that that person's, um, issue is worth more than this person's issue.
You can, again, council can spend the money to do it. The problem will come down of what those recoup costs look like. You're not just spending the council's money, you're not just spending the town's money, you're spending everybody's money. Even the neighbor that she lives next to, that's his taxes that he's paying into that. So, you just have to be mindful that people have property rights. They are allowed to do stuff with their property. Yes, there is health and sanitation issues, but people-
I'm, I'm, I'm well aware of property rights. Don't, don't tread on my, on my property generally. It's not a-
But people, individuals can file health complaints against their neighbors. They don't need the town to do that for them. So, you just-
Property rights on both sides of the fence.
Right.
There is, but-
That's the whole point about it.
Yeah, because, I mean, you know, because, you know, Lisa has rights as well. You know, the, you know, the, that, the other guy's right to swing his arm ends at, at where it affects her property value.
And again, she does have rights. And it's kind of speaking to what she was talking about before. She can go a legal route on her own. She has that ability. She can seek legal recourse against her neighbor. The town doesn't have to do that for her. She can go to the health department. She can file that complaint. She's filed the complaints with us. We've wrote the letters. To a degree, but our voice shouldn't be levied against other people.
Small dispute between neighbors after seeing those pictures.
I didn't say it was a small dispute. I said, was it a dispute between neighbors?
It, it, it's not. When looking at the pictures, those pictures, and I can get more that speak a thousand words. So, that, I take that extremely personal because it's not just that. I have, I have reached out to help. I have reached out to help. It goes much beyond that. And that's, that's a big problem for me to hear after even the support I've given because I knew the last city council, it wasn't. And this is not the first time. The last time I had a male with me that actually had a trailer that could haul stuff to the junkyard or when it comes down. And it, it was, there was, there was just silence. This time, it was not just silence. But it's not like he's hadn't have offered to help. I'm not looking for anybody to go in and remove stuff illegally, no. But you guys do have a bigger voice. You, that's why you are elected to council, to represent us. And yes, there is other routes. Those other routes will involve newspapers. They will, I, I don't, Tonny Town, I want to maintain, people want to come here, that it's a good town, that we take care of each other. And it's, it's not just a small dispute between neighbors. It's, those pictures show much more, and that's where I'll leave it.
And just to clarify, again, this isn't the only property we see this at. We probably get ten to twenty complaints a week on properties. I think our code enforcement queue was up to eighty-
And cases that were about grass?
Was up to, was up to eighty properties. And again, it isn't just about grass. We have West Baltimore. We have a house on Carnival that has a window knocked out, grass growing. We have the property behind Carnival that has rodents and rats coming out that we just had to abate. We have, um, properties that, yes, the grass is a foot higher or more. We have properties that have accumulation of garbage and rubbish and whatnot. The problem is, is that even if we send those letter out, even if we tell them we're going to find them, again, most people know that it costs us more than we're going to recoup finding these people. So, if you do one property, just be aware you are going to do more than just that one property, and it will be expensive. And it isn't that, it isn't that your concern isn't valid. I see the concern. I know what you're dealing with over there. The problem comes down to is what that enforceability really looks like because it- And I understand that. I really do. The problem, again, comes down to you still have mechanisms that you as an individual can seek that isn't the town going to court with this individual. Again, this, this isn't the only property that we see this at. This actually isn't, and again, your, your concerns are very valid, but there are worse properties than this by far that I've seen just this week alone. And it is an issue. We're trying to deal with it the best way that we can. But what it really comes down to is the individual's right to accumulate stuff is more than our right to say that it's a health hazard. And you'll find that out in court. And I'm not, we, we take the code enforcement part of it seriously. Darryl was working on that property again and again. But there's only so much the town can realistically do before it does cost taxpayer money to go do something about it and at the cost of possibly losing that. Because again, this, this isn't the only time this has happened. We've taken properties to court before. We know how the process works. But the city manager will send out a letter again. Anything regarding grass vegetation, we'll look to abate. Council can mull over the idea of additional ordinances and, uh, code changes. But they do have to be wary of what that looks like. It is, it isn't as simple as, um, you know, you put some additional stuff in there for enforcement, and we only enforce that property. You're going to open the door to multiple properties. And it isn't that those properties shouldn't be enforced. The problem's going to come down to, I think it's more than you guys realize it is. And-
Or what's going to be more than we realize it is?
More properties than just that, that the moment you open the door of, hey, we're going to go fight on behalf of this individual against this property, you need to do it for all properties. It can't just be for Lisa's properties that she's fighting against.
Rules should be applied evenly and, and, yeah.
And again, that's my-
But they also need to be applied and enforced. And if we're not going to, you know, and, and it becomes common knowledge that we're not going to enforce the rules, then it's a free-for-all.
Well, we do, we do enforcement. The problem is, is even if we abate the property, it goes down the exact same track as, uh, if we were going to levy fines against them. We put the, they owe the money, but we'd have to really take them to court if we really want to collect it. It can go against property taxes are going to be collected that way. But, uh, again, that still requires us to go to court. Isn't, it isn't as simple as just writing a letter and it, and again, I'll say, what, Jim? Probably eighty percent, we write a letter and it gets taken care of?
I think that's a fair, fair number.
And again, we, I think just Carnival alone, we wrote thirty letters in July, maybe even more than that. We are constantly doing it. The problem just comes down to, a lot of this is personal responsibility. It's homeowner responsibility. If the, if the council wants the town to be similar to an HOA, for instance, down that road with code and ordinance, but it's not, it's going to be a lot harder than just rewriting some ordinances. There is no mechanism that just allows us to skip courts to actually abate personal property. People have that right to their property that's on their property. Um, and again, that's why I'm not going to have staff go out and throw people's property away. But we can, again, we can do stuff as far as abatement and grass goes. I mean, that's a very low risk. Send out the fine letters. We can find them, and those fines can accumulate, but it will take us going to court to collect those fines.
A quick thought, maybe, before we wrap this up. I'll suggest that when, uh, when a new city attorney is appointed, that we have a discussion with, with he or she, uh, about the, uh, mechanisms, you know, to address those properties where compliance is challenging. As the mayor noted, most people, when they get, uh, and, you know, I've started, we had some door hangers printed up. So, you know, it's a little checkbox, you know, property overgrown, obstructing the sidewalk, whatever it might be. And, um, you can put a little note on the back, please trim the bush that's hanging over the sidewalk or whatever it is. Hang it on the door. Go back a week later. Most people take care of it. But that ten to twenty percent that don't are very challenging. So, perhaps we can work with the incoming attorney to see if there are mechanisms that maybe we haven't explored, um, that, that they might be able to recommend for us as far as, you know, other options on collecting fines, things, things of that nature.
So, if, if we have assessed fines and they are not paid, I would think that it's a simple matter to go to court and to get a judgment. And once we have a judgment, then can we not attach that to their property taxes?
So, and I'm not saying that we need to do, to maintain this practice, but historically, we have not taken anything to court without the council's approval to do that.
I'm not suggesting that we do.
I'm, I'm only aware, and, and I did this job for sixteen years, and we probably got council's approval to get the attorney involved on maybe five cases. So, it's, and, and some of them, you know, are recurring issues, and they've come back again. We spent money, you know, the attorney sent the letter that was, you know, more threatening, I guess, than our letters, saying we were going to take them to court if they didn't do it by X date. And that prompted more action than my letters as the code enforcement officer did. And those properties were cleaned up. But under the same ownership, some of them have returned back to the, the condition they were in before. Having worked with our former attorney on this issue, his stance or his, you know, take on it was that, yes, we can go to court. We can request an abate, an order to abate. We will get that order. The person may or may not abate it. If they don't correct it, we go back saying, hey, judge, they didn't abate this violation. Can we get it? And then that court order insulates us from some liability. And that's what lets us go in and clean up that property without as much risk. You know, certainly, there's always some risk involved. But we may get that order to abate, and we may get the property cleaned up, but that it was very unlikely that would be, we would be awarded that hundred-dollar-a-day fine that the code says we can charge. So, it ends up costing the city money, which is, you know, you could just say, that's the cost of doing business. But we need to be able to budget for that, and we don't. And we need to have the time and the staff to focus on that. And right now, we don't. You know, ten years ago, the city was smaller. There was less going on. Our code wasn't on the web, so people didn't have the ability to go in and look it up and say, oh, my neighbor's property is in violation of one twenty-four, eight, seven. They can do that now. So, we probably get more complaints now than we used to. We don't have somebody with the opportunities to patrol, and maybe we don't want to do that. I don't know. It seems to vary, uh, a lot. So, so the-
Probably an issue we want to know after tonight.
One moment.
I don't think the issue is that the code doesn't give us the ability it needs to. The only thing that I see as a potential shortcoming with the code is that it doesn't specifically state that we can collect fines the same, in the same manner as unpaid taxes. We can collect abatements in that way. Historically, we have levied fines and we have abated properties more for weeds and grass violations than other things. That invoice that goes unpaid when we send it to the property owner sits out there. It's, it's in our system. Eventually, that property changes hands, and when they go to settlement, we get that money back that we spent to, you know, haul away the junk or mow the lawn or whatever it might be. It might take years, but we get that, that back. For federally-backed mortgages, we don't get the funds back because the federal government doesn't pay fines. So, uh, that, that used to be a thing, but they, not anymore. So, the, the code is not really the problem. It's, it's the follow-up and, you know, with the, the, whether we're going to adjudicate those cases where the person doesn't comply. And that, that is a relatively small percentage. But right now, and, and I'm just looking at this month's, you know, planning zoning code report, we logged in thirty-four new cases. We were able to close ten. We have a hundred and seven open cases. So, and a lot of them are in the same neighborhood. You know, there's, there are certain neighborhoods that are much busier than others. But to stay on top of it, it, someone needs to have the time to be out there in the field and be on it regularly. And from my experience in the role, times that I could be in the field knocking on doors, talking to people, leaving, you know, reminders or sending open letters to the community or sticking them in the storm doors or whatever, that takes a lot of time. But doing it, you, you could see a difference in the periods when I could do that and then when I didn't have time to do it. When I didn't have time to do it, very quickly, things in some neighborhoods slid back to very poor conditions. But if we're out there, we have a presence, and people are getting warnings and violation notices. Most people take action with it. But it takes the commitment of the city to have the time to do that.
Pardon regularly and then I get a bunch of weeds pretty quickly.
And it's kind of the same thing. Again, we see a relapse in the properties that we even do get to that point.
Absolutely.
And that's, 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 that's the thing is it's, it's a never-ending circle.
Thing if somebody's allowing their property to get to that.
Again, we, we even got to the point where we were talking about the, again, pilfering through trash and recycling, for instance. And again, that's a problem that we've seen as far as cans collected on our property. But the, the real problem is every time it gets cleaned up, two months later, it's right back to where it was. So it's a cycle. We don't, we don't have a perpetual way to stop people from doing the same thing. So even if we go and do it and we spend the money to do it, a month or two later, you're probably going to see a relapse of the problem. Because if they weren't doing it before and they weren't minding the fines before and they weren't minding the letters before, even if you get a court to tell them, hey, they can come in and do it and we do it, more than likely, they're just going to relapse to where they were.
I would like to address a couple of things that Jim said.
Yep, give me, give me one moment here. And again, the next thing would be that the planning and zoning, again, planning and zoning has been very busy. If council wants to take that approach, they need a budget for a code enforcement officer, a separate one. And, you know, that, that'd be up to the council if they want to do that. But, you know, you have, you have to ask what you get back on that. Again, you're going to send out these letters, you're going to send out these fines, you're going to keep doing it, and you're going to see the relapse, relapse, relapse. There's no real mechanism that you're going to put in place that's going to perpetually stop this. This is something all towns see. And this, this particular property is one of many. And it isn't, and it gets even more complicated, I'd say, when we're talking about backyard clutter and backyard messes versus front yard.
Pump Road, this would still be, it would still be front to Pump House Road. And if that fence goes down, you would be able to see it all too. Specifically to you, you've been there a long time. And before Tawney Town was as big as it was and we had less complaints. Let's be honest, the council and our attorney, and that's why we have a new council. That's why we have a whole new council. And that's why we're looking at getting a new attorney to address things differently because he wasn't working very hard on certain things. And honestly, even when the town was smaller, it wasn't something that the town wanted to work on. It wasn't something that anybody wanted to put in the time in, even when we did have the people. Because this isn't the first time we've talked about such things and even when I was on other committees. And this particular property, I'm not 100% sure, but I'm pretty sure does not have a mortgage on it. Just FYI. As far as return on investment, if that's what you're looking at, I'm pretty sure this individual property was passed down and does not have, unless it's been remortgaged recently, it doesn't have mortgage on it. And I think they would have a really hard time getting a mortgage on it. I'm not even sure if it has homeowner insurance. So I'm looking at, there's a lot of different things I am looking at, but I'm pretty sure it doesn't have a mortgage. So as far as return on investment, if you're looking at that, and even when we did have the people, and that's why we have a whole new council, and that's why we got rid of an attorney who did not want to do certain things or put the effort into looking into certain things. That's why y'all are here. Because we knew certain things or we hoped that certain things would change. And this, even when we had the people, that's what I want to insist, even when we did have the people, it wasn't something that the office and the council really wanted to address. They didn't. So instead of just saying, well, this, this and this, I hope you guys truly will brainstorm.
I would tell you, since I've been here, I know for a fact we've stepped up enforcement. Even on the property that you've talked about, again, we have gone back, we've sent letters, we've had it cleaned, we've had portions of it cleaned multiple times. Again, we've had the tagged, untagged vehicles taken out.
The council that was before really was, again, the whole dumpster and hazardous issue of waste. I mean, there were persons, there were certain people who were, but as a whole, you couldn't come together on it. And that's...
It's the same thing the city manager was talking about. What, when it comes down to it, if we're going to take an individual to court, council's going to have to give the say-so on that. Again, we can send out the letters, we can send out the fines, but as far as collection goes, council will have to, have to say on that. And I'm, if that's council's prerogative, if they want to do that, and I've, I feel indifferently on it. The biggest problem is, is just the cost aspect. If it didn't cost us money, sure, that would be, that, that's whatever, but we'll go ahead and get all that done. Again, how, I'll tell you, you know, housing, the assessments aren't going down currently. They are going up. That's what we've seen right now, where we're seeing the tax revenue increase from 25. Even, even that blighted property, again, that's not going to bring down those house values in that area right now. That's not going to happen. But the biggest problem is, is it's not, even if we go to collect, just as the city manager was saying, we do not get that money back.
But like you said, council...
I know, I'm just...
I think the takeaway is we need to, we need to strategize to see if it's something that we can do, right? Because like, may, maybe our hands are tied because of a lot of the stuff that Chris is saying. I don't know the answer, but I, I think this is something that we need to take away and discuss and kind of ideate.
And again, it really would just come down to if council wants to spend that money or not. We write the letters, we send out the fines, we send out the, again, we're doing abatements right now on properties. What, what it comes down to is, is as far as moving personal property that is on property, I'm not going to have staff do that currently. That is way too risky for us to do. If council wants to take an individual to court to collect stuff, council should have that discussion. But just be aware, it is not just one property. You can't just do that for one property. If you're going to do that for that property, you need to take up the other cases that we have. And it is not...
Jim, would it be possible to get a status report on all of the currently open complaints? I mean, that'd be for, for Monday's meeting or whatever, but, and it's, can just stay internal to the council, but I would like to know.
I can generate a report that will have, I can, I can extract something out of the tracking system. So it, it may have, you know, just very basic data like what the, there's a, so our zoning and code system, we were able to build it with a certain number of, I'll say preset violations. So we picked the things that we encountered most often. So for those, I can generate a report that, that will identify the code section that's the violation. But for violations where there's not a, like, clear, like, preloaded violation in there, I might not be able to get that field to, to report out, but, but the majority of it, I think should be, I should be able to get you like summary information.
You know, what they, what they are and how long they've been open and what the accumulated fines are, that would be handy information to know.
I have not gone back and looked at a lot of the open cases that were out there because we've, we've been struggling to keep up with, with even the new ones that are like a lot of overgrown properties and things like that right now. But yeah, I can, I can generate a report out of the system and I would be happy to have a conversation offline with, with anybody. I don't, if you want to talk about specific properties in, in the public forum to a great extent.
And one thing I will say that we've seen of how this normally goes is, one property owner files a complaint against this property owner, then this property owner looks at his neighbors and realizes per our code, the five neighbors around him are also in violation of something. Believe it or not, it is very easy to be in violation of some form of code in our code. So that is normally what we see is it starts off with one neighbor files a complaint against this neighbor, this neighbor files a complaint against all these neighbors, and then that's why we have a queue of 100 houses. So again, it isn't just one property, it's a lot of properties. Just keep that in mind as we're going forward. But again, that's something council will have to discuss. We'll put it on for September to discuss the direction council wants to go on that. So take a think on it between now and September and...
Yeah, we can get that information between now and then, that would, so we'd have some, a real, you know...
Additional public comment pertaining to agenda and non-genue items? Does anybody have a public comment? Done, proceeding forward. Jim, we already, did we do city manager report? Or were you still going through it?
No, no. We were, we were just about to, I think.
Just about to when we got...
Okay. So, let's see, as far as charter and code updates, really, we, we have been working on the streets and stormwater spec and the, the comp plan has kind of taken priority over, you know, general code review right now. We have seen a draft of the street and stormwater specifications at the staff level when we reviewed and we met with CDM Smith this week. We had a number of revisions that we asked them to make. So the target date for us to have that revised version is August 20th. So hopefully we still will have something that, you know, we can sort of lay via email later in the month. But right now, we, we, we found some inconsistencies between the text and the plates and, and the way some things were dimensioned and things, so we wanted to clean that up before we shared it with you. But that is, that is progressing. No update on Roberts Mill Road, Broad Street. I'm hoping to have some time with the city attorney in the next week or so for some The contract for the Riffles Lane Storm Drain is, is executed. I have not heard that we've had the meeting with the grading inspector as yet, though. Westview Drive Waterline Replacement has gone very, very well. The waterline work is all complete. Everybody's connected to it. The pavement work is nearly complete. I believe all that's left is the speed table that's going to go in. So that, the, the paving contractor was pulled off site for their, an emergency contractor for other jurisdictions that had some storm damage, so they pulled off to go to some other jobs temporarily. But the speed table has yet to go in there. And I guess some positive news is that, I mentioned, perhaps it was in one of my updates or maybe it was last month's report, that we expected to have to reconstruct a pretty good portion of Church Street and Roberts Mill Road where we did the new water line. After we did the milling, it turned out that there actually was a decent roadbed in most of those areas, so we were able to do some, some point repairs of the roadbed. So the majority of it ended up just being mill and overlay, so it was a substantial overlay, but it wasn't the extensive reconstruction that we thought it was going to be. So we, we opted instead. We continued Westview Drive's pavement all the way out to York Street instead of stopping at church, just so we would have the consistency of the new fresh blacktop. If anybody's had a chance to get out there, you know, great. If not, maybe take a look at it. I just walked along Church Street this afternoon and, you know, I was very pleased with what I saw as far as the new, new level of the road, that there was some ponding and things, you know, proximate to the Lutheran Church and West Baltimore Street that I think are going to be alleviated now with, with the new level of the pavement and the area around the storm drain is much nicer. So very, very happy with the appearance of the work so far. So, so some good news on that one. Let's see, the sewer manhole rehabilitation, we had our bid opening today and we'll have a recommendation for you guys on Monday. But the bids, we got bids from three contractors, Triangle Contracting, Guyer Brothers and Pleasant Construction. And the bids were quite a spread, actually, for a relatively small project. They were, in the respective order of those contractors, 249,000, 151,253, and 314,065. So CDM Smith is reviewing the bids and we'll have a recommendation memo for you guys on Monday night on that. I think that does it for my report. So if anybody has any questions about this, I'm happy to do my best.
Question, comments, concerns for city manager? Hearing none proceeding forward to department reports. Jim, you got anything for that?
Nope, nothing specific.
Council, you got any questions, comments, concerns, department reports? Hearing none proceeding forward to new business, monthly financial report. Questions, comments, concerns regarding the report? None proceeding forward to accounts... Heading to accounts payables, any questions, comments, concerns by council? Proceeding forward, it wasn't on the agenda, but we had something pop up in July. There is a request for a water reprieve from a, from one of the churches. Jim, do you want to explain the situation out there?
Sure. So Tawney Town Baptist Church is the site of our wellhouse, well number 17 and wellhouse. Our communication with our wellhouses and, and the wastewater treatment plant is via a line of sight system. We've got antennas up on the water tower, the standpipe, the city office and a couple of other locations around town. So we rely on that, that line of sight to communicate with, with our various locations around the city. At the Baptist Church at well 17, there are some basically scrub vegetation and wild trees that were obstructing the signal and the public works department cleared that out. And the church was not happy with that. So the mayor and I went out, met with some of the, with the pastor and some of the members of the, I'm not sure if they're considered church council, but who had reached out to express their frustration with us. And while we were there, you know, obviously we can replant some hedge or something like that, so they have a green buffer and they don't look at the wellhouse. But they had mentioned that the fact that they pay for water when they use so little and yet they granted the easement for the city to drill a well on their property has apparently been sort of a point of frustration for them ever since they connected to the water system. So they're requesting some relief on, on their water bill because of that well being on their property.
And the tree buffers was between them and that, so they didn't have to see that from their church. And it's, it's a pretty sizable clearing.
Is it, do we own that property or they own the property? We just have an easement?
They own it. We only have an easement.
Do we pay for that easement?
I do not recall.
My, my understanding from talking with them was that we didn't. They granted it to us. And again, when I talked with them, they thought, they didn't know there was going to be a road to the easement as well. That's a whole nother subject. But mainly, the reprieve was talked about in regards to the clearing that happened because there were some older trees that were cleared. It's, it's a pretty substantial size of the clearing. And again, to replant that and to build that buffer up is going to take a good while. The reprieve that, and that I had recommended is a 6,000 gallon reprieve. Do you know how much that comes? That's about maybe 10 to 20% above their monthly average. But that's what it could go up to essentially. And I don't remember, you know how much that costs, Jim, as far as...
I can find our rates real quick and calculate it, but...
Essentially, the well was built on their property. That buffer was there, so they didn't have to see it from their church grounds. And it became very noticeable, we cleared it right around the same time that they were having a helicopter candy drop. So that was a, that was an interesting one. But again, this is mainly, it's not completely uncommon. For instance, the fire department doesn't pay water for the water usage. We have a agreement with, when they repay their parking, we pay a portion of it and it's available for use for public parking. So the well that is used on their property is a part of public good. So it's not too far out of alignment. And I think the cost comes down to a couple dollars every three months to make good on basically clearing out a clearing. We didn't have permission to clear to begin with. I think that was, that was the real point of frustration is, is I guess we talked to the wrong individual and they didn't have permission to say that we could clear that.
So we went on their property, cleared some stuff because of this thing...
As far as antenna could...
...line of sight to be able to get the information and we have an easement on their property for the well. Want basically a discount on their water rate? Am I just...
Basically to say, you know, they, they gave up that part to put the well on their property. They didn't know a road was going to be built. We built the road and then we've cleared the shovs. They're just looking for some kind of goodwill on the city's part for what they've given in public good, which is the easement for the well.
Like this should have been addressed when the well was put in, not years later.
And that's what, I mean, they brought up, they wish it would have been addressed when the well was put in, but this is kind of, again, we're going to try to plant some shrubbery out there, but it's going to take a while for that to grow, to even block out, seeing that from their church. My understanding is that, that was part of the agreement when they put the easement in there, that wouldn't be difficult for them to do. Now that we've kind of broken that part, and again, I think it's a pretty good...
6,000 gallons? 6,000 gallons?
$128 a quarter.
$128 every three months. Trees that we cut down are probably more expensive.
Were the, were the trees on, on our side of the easement line or do we have any kind of survey to know, excuse me, you know, what, you know, or any, has anyone read the easement documents, you know, the, the recorded documents to know what rights we do and don't have on that piece of property? Yeah, I, I would think that we would wanna check that first. You know, if we, if, if, if the trees were on the easement and we had full rights to the easement, you know, I, I think we probably should work with them about some plantings or something and, but if we have full rights to the easement, then we weren't in any kind of violation of anything to go do what we needed to do to make our system work.
Jim, when was this done? Did, did we have, I guess, capability for, did we need line of sight back when we originally did this well, well, or this well?
No, we, we were not using, we were using telephone lines at that point and paying for a lot more telephone lines.
So my understanding, with talking with them, was that that buffer of the vegetation and green was part of the agreement for when they did the well site? Do you remember that from the conversation?
I, I don't recall that. I, I think that was, again, it's, it's largely scrub vegetation and thing, you know, just a-
Right, a hedgerow.
A forested strip and, you know, we cleared on the, the well portion of it. I'll, I'll say the well side of, of the property.
But we don't have an easement through that entire property.
I mean, we'll, we'll have to go back through and maybe compare the easement plat with the aerial, you know, with your orthography and see where those, where that tree line lines up compared to the easement area. The, the church council folks that, that pointed it out to me indicated that, you know, they believe that the easement did not give us the authority to trim trees or anything like that. Although we do mow the area around the well, we do maintain that easement area. But yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at the, at the easement plat compared to the tree line, see exactly where that falls and review the easement language.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't have, you know, if, if, it depends on how it reads, but if we don't have rights to do it, then obviously we need to, you know, do some kind of reparation to that.
We, we asked someone before we did it, right?
I don't, I don't know that we did. I don't believe we did.
My understanding was that we did from the phone call that we had with Kevin.
I think that they were in communication with someone from the church. I don't know if it was before the fact or, or as it was going on. The individual that they had communication with initially commented favorably on getting the scrub vegetation cleaned up. But that was not the prevailing opinion of others at the church. We'll, we'll get some more details for Monday night.
When, when are you looking for a decision on this, by the way? Cause I mean, I'd like, kinda like some extra information too, so.
Whenever, I can sense this whenever. Again, I, personally, it's, uh, it's land that we got an easement to put a well on forever ago. Talking with them, and I don't know who's right or wrong, I was around at that time, but again, they believe that a road was gonna be built through there. We built a road through there. Obviously, we didn't need line of sight back then, so I doubt we cared about cutting down brush, but we needed to cut it down this time. I highly doubt that the easement goes through the entire property there. I would say it's still a good public gesture for, for a reprieve on a large water. Public service-
Permanent reprieve, or are we talking like, uh, something with a top clock out of curiosity?
I'd say, I'd say permanent or maybe a re-up every five years, something of that nature.
What's our contract look with, or what's, what's our agreement look like with Trinity on the pavement for the parking lot? Or to what we do with that church? Again, that parking lot's used for public access, but we do pay a portion of the repaving for it, even though it is for a parking lot.
That was like a one-time thing, we paid for the repaving or the-
Right, and, and in exchange, we have, right, it was a license agreement that we could use-
But that was a one-time, said and done.
For a certain number of years. I, I think it was-
And we're gonna re-up on the certain amount, certain number of years. Or else we're not gonna have parking for that portion of Main Street. But again, that's why I'd be fine with the, a re-up every five years or whatever, so council can re-examine it. But realistically, it's a well, we got an easement on their property, put a well. Had shrubbery that hit it from their church. The well probably, I don't know if it's the parking out there, but the well probably serves more of a public use than that. Probably a lot cheaper than the repaving. I'll have Jim get together some more details for Monday and I'll look for a consensus then.
I think for me, the biggest thing I, you guys mentioned, we've done similar things. Like I think that's more, like what, what's, understanding the model that we've done with, with other places is kind of similar to this. A hundred and twenty-eight dollars a quarter is like, that's, that's kind of my first thought.
Public wall that we needed. Jim, can you get the agreement for the Trinity Lutheran parking lot, what are, what are we at, done back then as well?
Looking at it now.
Let's just, let's bring that for Monday, we don't need it tonight. We'll look to get consensus on Monday for it, though. Couple of things, we had a really good application coming for planning and zoning. If everything works out, we're, again, we're gonna be looking to hopefully have a nomination for September. Same thing for public exec, or administrative executive assistant, have a good application and hopefully have an appointment in September. Attorney, still shopping around, we have one suggestion that has a potential conflict on it. Looking to see how that plays out. But we do have some, I got some additional suggestions from MML at the symposium in August.
About boards?
So board appointments will be on Monday, you guys will get a list either Friday, probably Friday. A lot of re-appointments, some new appointments. So far, I think there's only four spots left across all the boards, so just looking for those four spots and they should all be filled at that point.
Awesome.
And, and review committee. So hopefully all the boards will be, hopefully if I get those applications in by Monday, we'll be able to fill all those out. But again, I'll get basically a list of names, where they're going, and that'll get sent out to council probably Friday. Newsletter, I was talking with the city manager, that's gonna have to wait till we get the additional executive, till we get the executive administrative assistant, so we have additional staff to work on that. Again, planning and zoning has taken up a lot of time, city manager's taken up a lot of time. Once those two positions are filled, we'll hopefully be able to start knocking that out regularly.
Will you ever ask about the, the follow-up stuff from CQI?
Oh, that's what I had to say. So they'll be, they'll be here in the September meeting. So he'll be in person at the September meeting to do another presentation. From there on that September meeting, we'll be looking, I'll be looking for council to get a decision on it.
Right, in the September meeting?
Yep, September meeting. Was he workshop or meeting?
I gave him the workshop date.
That's fine, we'll have him, we'll have him present at the workshop and then decide on the meeting.
We try and get some of that follow-up information as soon as possible so we can start reviewing.
Yeah, he, I know Jim reached out to him today, he didn't have any additional stuff to send out to council. But I know he wants, he said he wants to present in person for it.
That's, that's fine, it's just, it's good to know what, what's being presented, right?
I mean, I imagine he'll send out similar to what you guys received before, before he presented last time, which was that packet essentially. So we'll make sure he gets that submitted for September, he'll come to the workshop, we'll make a decision on that Monday. The speed spec, or the specs for the roads, the draft has been reviewed. There were some comments and changes that the city manager sent back. The draft, you, we're hoping to have it to you guys out by the end of this month, so you can review it before the September meeting. And then that'll be up for introduction and whatnot in September. Jim, you got anything you could think of that I missed?
The license agreement with the church was 10 years, by the way.
10 years?
How's Main Street framework going?
Bob, I know Bob is still working on it, he has some committee members that he's thinking of.
We, yeah, we actually wanna set us some time to meet with you next week and go over some of that, make sure we're on the right track for your agenda.
Yep, so we'll, we'll meet on that soon.
Welcome sign?
The welcome sign should be pretty easy to knock out. I think that'll, that's gonna be when we have the additional staffing. So again, anything that isn't more immediate and pressing regarding safety, that's kind of, that's kind of sitting on pause. So we do have that planning and zoning, that executive administrative assistant. So hopefully we'll be able to actually start knocking that out in September. Cause I, I will say again, staff do have a lot on their plate right now. And again, with the summer vacations, people being out, I was sick for like three weeks of July, so I'm still catching up. So we're working through it, but looking to have a pretty good big meeting for September. September is it, October, October's audit presentation, right?
Yep, and also in October, the Monday, the date of the Monday meeting is Columbus Day. So if, we might wanna combine the workshop and meeting on the Wednesday evening meeting.
We'll, we'll go ahead and do that, everybody go with that.
Is there a holiday?
Monday's Columbus Day.
So combined meeting for that Wednesday in October. But again, expect September to be a pretty big meeting, cause all that stuff that was backed up is gonna come on there. Additional comments, questions, concerns by council before I move to adjournment? Looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
All those who appear significantly saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.